Okay, this meeting of the Shelton Metropolitan Parks District is now called to order. No one has signed up for public comment, so if somebody wants to change their mind, raise your hand and see none. There's no consent agenda, so we will move down to the business agenda, which is a potential County 2018 levy shift, and NOLA will be presenting.
Thank you, Commissioners. Mason County is interested possibly in a levy shift, and this briefing sheet explains how that levy shift would work. They would shift some money from the roads levy over to the general levy, and if they were to do that, that could impact the SMPD, but they would need to get SMPD's permission in order to do it. And this just outlines what that shift would look like. At this point, we don't know for sure what the county is interested in doing moving forward with it, whether they're still going to pursue the shift or not. But in the event that they do, we need to be prepared to offer them a decision from the SMPD about how we would like to deal with that. Basically, this would involve -- the good news is it does not impact any of the SMPD taxpayers. There are basically three options here in this shift. The first option would be that the SMPD Board takes no action at all, which in effect would be rejecting the county's request for a shift. The second option would be that the SMPD Board does accept the proposed county levy shift. That would reduce the SMPD's levy rate from its current rate of 72 cents per thousand dollars of assessed value down to 61 cents, and the county would, in exchange for that, make the SMPD whole with a buy-down payment, and that is allowed under RCW, and that would replace the loss to SMPD. That would allow the county to go ahead and collect roughly $855,000 in countywide tax revenue, and it would allow them to maintain their corresponding countywide services. The third option is for the SMPD Board to voluntarily reduce the current roughly 72 cent levy rate down to the 61 cent rate without a buy-down agreement, and this would mean the SMPD would absorb that. It would be about a $75,000 hit to the SMPD budget for 2018, and in exchange for that, the county is willing to enter into an MOU with the City of Shelton to provide a commensurate reimbursement to the city. Really, the best way to explain these options is if you look at the table down below on page two. That's probably a better visual than all of the words. The first option, no action, would mean the county loses about $855,000 of revenue, tax revenue, no impact to SMPD and no impact to the City of Shelton. The second option would be the SMPD accepts the county's levy shift. This would give the county the ability to collect that $855,000 in tax revenue. It would be a net zero impact to SMPD because the levy reduction would be replaced by a buy-down payment, and it would have no impact on the city at all. Option three would be the voluntarily reducing the levy rate without the shift. That would give the county the ability to collect that tax revenue. The SMPD would take a $75,000 hit. That would equal, in your 2018 budget, it would drop from around $475,000 down to around $400,000, and it would be an additional $75,000 to the City of Shelton. So what I'll be doing in the next few days is preparing resolutions for options two and option three, so that if you choose one of those options next Monday, we will have the resolution ready for you to sign that corresponds to that option. If you choose to do nothing, then you can see in the top of that table what that would look like. Any questions we can answer for you about this? I know it's a little confusing.
It is confusing. I don't -- so basically, when I'm looking at this, the difference between option two and option three is that the money either comes to the city or the money comes to the Shelton Metropolitan Parks District.
That's correct. That's really the primary difference between those two. In option two, the city's not impacted at all, and the SMPD would have a net zero impact because the SMPD would receive the buy-down payment. Basically, the difference between two and three is in two, that $75,000 payment from the county would go to the SMPD. In option three, it would go to the City of Shelton.
Okay, and then are those funds, say if we went with option three, are those funds designated for a specific use, or do they just go into the general fund?
They would go into the general fund.
Can we move them back over to the SMPD, once they go in the general fund?
I don't know. Separate entity.
Right.
If you were going to do that, you could accomplish that with option two rather than option three.
Right, right, right. Okay.
Well, I think our only choice is option two or do nothing. I mean, I don't think option three is, we don't want to take $75,000 out of the park. I mean, we did this a few years ago.
You could.
Well, we could. We like Mark, so here's what happened. A few years ago, we did this, and when the county gave us back the money so we wouldn't be affected, it went directly into your park.
It went in the SMPD, yeah.
Yeah.
In 2016, correct.
So I would tend to think the city would move in that position rather than to take the money.
I don't know. It looks like we have some time to think about this because I'm just interested in the differences between the two options. I don't think, honestly, I don't think that option one is something that we would want to do. We have to take some action, it looks like to me. This is an action item. Are there any -- any one in the -- oh, okay. No, never mind. Excuse me. Next time we talk about this, I'm assuming we will have additional opportunity for public comment.
It'll come back as an action item when the county requests the SMPD to take action and make a recommendation to the SMPD, so we're still waiting on that from Mason County.
And does that have to be done by the end of the year?
We do need to get this stuff done.
Okay.
The plan is, the plan is they're going to make a decision at the county probably within the next few days, sometime this week, and we need to be prepared next Monday based on what we get back from them this week. We need to be prepared next Monday for the SMPD Board to take action on this.
Okay. So a vote needs to be by next Monday? Okay, and you'll bring both resolutions forward?
Yes.
Okay, are there any other questions, comments?
Nope.
Are we up for putting this on the action agenda for next week's meeting?
I am. Yes.
Is there an administration report?
That's it.
Okay. So the next special Shelton Metropolitan Parks District meeting will be Monday, December 18th, 6:00 PM, and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call our regular City of Shelton Commission meeting to order. And the first item on our business is, as we always do, we talk about what our weekly activities are, and I'll turn the meeting over to Commissioner Moore at this time.
Okay. I left my datebook at home, so the only thing that I know is I do have a Mason County Housing meeting, and then on Thursday, we have a meeting here at the Civic Center that is a staff appreciation day to celebrate our great staff here at Shelton, and that's it for this week.
All right, Mr. McDowell?
Quiet week, nothing, except maybe getting together with different people, but at this point, no.
Okay. And tomorrow, which is Tuesday, I will be having my staff briefing, and then I'll be attending my MaceCom Board meeting in the afternoon. Thursday, I will be in Belfair at our annual Economic Development Council retreat. I will leave there at 11:05 and be back here by 11:30 to attend our city employee appreciation lunch, which will be no city business discussed at that luncheon. And on Friday, I will have another Economic Development Council event that I'm going to. That concludes our weekly commission reports, and at this time, we have general public comment. So I'll turn the meeting over to Jamie, who controls that part of the meeting.
Mike Olson?
Mike Olson, I'm here to comment on the last few weeks. Our two commissioners who stand in violation of numerous items have both publicly apologized, although, in my opinion, rather weakly, and they both swore to regain the citizens' trust, which refers me to another incident. We're right back to the same spot, and that is Commissioner McDowell's request for salary of our city administrator last week. She hired him. She was one of three people that hired him. She should have known that without staff time to find all that out. I think it was a direct retaliation, and I don't see how that's rebuilding any trust in the community. If this was a really important item, why was it brought up now? You know, it just didn't make any sense to have any kind of a public thing on this. Mr. Wheaton was very transparent in everything he's done. I wish that you guys would follow that example. Eric Anisco has already done a records request for the same information, and Eric figures prominently in your Facebook conversations, and it just kind of, you know, where there's smoke, there's fire. And I just think this was a direct correlation of you guys continuing harassment of the staff and the city manager. And if you guys ever expect to gain any kind of trust, if you can hold on to your seats, I think you guys need to really watch this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Lisa Renfro?
Yeah, I was wondering about parks and recs, if I could make a comment about an idea for that, even though we're off the subject.
Absolutely. Lower the mic there.
Yeah, I was hoping that they might consider changing the colors to the playground to the same as the gazebo, the red and blue and gray, to make it more visible for perspective because children, you know, have a hard time seeing in perspective for, you know, their safety, and it'd be a little more cheerful. And when people drive by, they can, it doesn't look like it's dirty, you know, even though it's symbolizing the railroad and whatnot. You know, it's a nice theme, but...
We might be talking about the wrong park.
Oh, okay.
Are you talking about the park over here, Neeland Park?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Are you talking about a park issue that we're talking about renewing a lease with the post office park?
Yeah, I was just talking about parks and recs and parks in general. Is that okay?
Parks in general, okay, sorry. Yeah, go on.
Okay. And then I had another question about the senior. They have a program in Olympia where they help seniors find other seniors to rent together to help them with affordability. They have a match-up program, so I didn't know if the aging and disabled senior centers open where the seniors could go and where they get assistance in, you know, finding a compatible person to do that, to help, because people are being pushed out financially of their homes with all the rates and things going up, taxes, water and sewer. They may need a service like that, possibly. Just wondering if they have that, if the city could help coordinate with that. And then another idea I had was about the crosswalks, at the major crosswalks, because people have a tendency to fail to press the button where the lights blink especially, and they'll just walk across, so have sort of a issue with being able to see them before they start crossing because there's a car in front. So I was hoping that the city could take out the parking spots right before the major crosswalks, especially the ones with lights, for safety because people fail to do that sometimes.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you, Lisa. Marilyn Ward?
Marilyn Ward, 1727 North Cliff Road. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here today to speak in support of our mayor and our Commissioner Kathy McDowell. I've been attending these meetings for over two years now, and lately, I've really been shocked at the way that these two have been attacked and the amount of hate that has been addressed towards them. Over the course of time, I have not seen some of the people that have been attacking them at any of these meetings. I don't know, maybe they just weren't interested in anything in Shelton, in how it was, what was going on or happening in the city, but then all of a sudden, they appear and they can do nothing but attack. I don't think that this does any good for our city at all, and it's affecting Shelton and citizens and Gary and Kathy. I've watched Gary and Kathy work very hard and make good decisions for Shelton. They do not deserve the kind of attacks they are getting, and I want them to know that myself and many others stand behind them and appreciate them, and I hope that you don't give in to these attacks because our City of Shelton needs you both. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
Okay, I have a statement to read at this time. It's kind of fitting, I suppose. And this, I have copies from media if they're here. The City of Shelton is faced with a major transition from a three-person commission to a seven-person council. Over the past few years, this commission has accomplished many wonderful things for the City of Shelton. Here are a few examples. We worked closely with Sahara Pacific to get their new mill opened quickly. We brought millions of dollars in grant money to help fund our sewer basins, and that will allow us to stop raising your sewer rates. We partnered with our local Chamber of Commerce to beautify our downtown, and as an elected official, I work at the pleasure of our citizens. I have an optimistic view and plan for the future of Shelton. I trust I will continue to have a significant contribution to our city. Thank you. Next, we are going to recess out of this meeting, and we're going to recess into a public hearing concerning our budget. And so, that's the recess out, and in recessing or into having our final budget talk to us, we're going to have our financial director, NOLA, do that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. You have ordinance number 1912-1217 available to you for a first reading, and I also have the 2018 final budget ready for your review. Are there any specific questions you have about the budget, or would you like me to just give you a quick run-through on it?
I would like that you do a quick run-through through it, and then what we will do is bring our Commissions, and maybe our questions be answered.
Okay. All right. A lot of the information about the budget is covered pretty carefully in, on page four, the city manager's message. We do have a stable 2018 year ahead of us. There's also some information on page four regarding the debt. All of the debt payments have been made according to their standard debt payment schedule, so that is on track. Fund balances are on track. The four primary priorities that you identified in your retreat back in August was public safety, economic development, technology upgrades, and the downtown vision plan, and this budget does focus on those four areas. Just as an example to that, you'll notice in the general fund, you will see a lower ending cash balance in 2018, and that is because we are moving the TBD money from the general fund over to capital improvements fund to help with the downtown connector project. So that's money, some of it came in in '16, some of it came in in '17, and some will be coming in in '18, and we're going to be moving all of that over to, this is on page four, I mean, on page seven, I'm sorry, in the all-funds summary. So that's part of the reason for the decrease in the general fund. It's not that we have a deteriorating financial condition, but rather, we're just transferring TBD money. We also see a decrease in the EMNR fund, and that is, again, planning for some capital expenditures, and this goes back to your number-one priority of public safety. We're going to be purchasing some law enforcement vehicles and a couple of major pieces of equipment for roads. So those are probably the big fund balance differences. When you look at page six, there is an overview of the budget, 2018 budget considerations. We did look closely at the aggregate assessed valuation changes for calculating property taxes. We saw approximately an 8% overall increase in AV, and there was about $25,000, I believe, in new revenue for new construction. Sales and BNO taxes remain stable, and they appear to be increasing at a slow, steady rate. Pretty slow, but it is steady. It's not volatile right now. We reviewed all of our inter-local agreements. We looked at any grants and loans and captured that in the budget. We looked at a variety of other revenue items that can hit the budget. On the expenditure side, we reviewed any potential wage adjustments, employees who have step raises. We took it into consideration, collective bargaining agreements. We looked at LNI rates and other benefit rate adjustments. We considered employees who may be retiring in 2018 and factored in cash outs for their leave. We also reviewed financial policies regarding our reserves. We looked at staffing configurations and any adjustments that were planning to that. We looked at capital expenditures. We looked at our current debt structure and our debt service requirements. That's all built into the budget. Other than that, I will just answer any questions that you have.
So can you share the little bit that's been paid off that we were talking about the other day?
Oh, certainly.
Kind of is a little bit, but it's encouraging.
Yes. In 2000, well, on December 1st of this year, the final payment was made on the UTGO bond debt. UTGO is unlimited tax, general obligation debt. That's voter-approved, taxpayer-paid debt, and I believe that was on the Civic Center. It wasn't paid off early. None of the debts have been paid off early. They've been paid off according to schedule, but the last payment was made on that particular debt on December 1st. That's why, if you were to go back a couple of meetings and look at the levy certification, you will notice that there's no bond levy in that levy certification, so our taxpayers are going to be relieved of that.
And how much is that?
I don't have the exact dollar figure in front of me, but I know the last payment was a couple hundred thousand dollars. So that payment, that debt is paid off. So we ended 2017, we're going to be ending it and beginning 2018 with about $43.5 million of debt. We will continue to, as we have in the past, make the debt payments on time, on schedule, and there is a chart on page four there on the right-hand side that shows the three different major categories of debts in the city manager's letter, and it shows the principal interest and total of general governmental, water, and sewer debts, and what the total is. We're paying close to $3 million a year in debt payments between principal and interest, and each year, we're reducing the principal by not quite $2 million. Any other budget questions I can answer for you?
I think we should have had a mortgage-burning party. That could have been fun. That's great news.
I had a question, and I'm kind of looking through here on the previous budget I found, and it's just something, I think it's good that we're doing it, but I definitely would like to be involved in the conversation about how we do this. And so, it's $100,000 that we had put in there for a possible economic development study, and do you, anybody, know where that is?
Yes, the plan is to produce and contract with somebody to get the city's first economic development plan. We don't have one at this point. We're already looking at a retail plan that will go into effect the first quarter next year, but as we do with water, with sewer, with comprehensive plan that we have here today, we feel it's important to actually have an economic development plan. We have somebody in place now that can do the work, but we do not have the information that businesses need us to have to provide them with statistics data to bring their businesses here. So that's the plan that we've got.
I think it's an excellent plan, and I really, really support this. I just, I want to be in the loop real close on, you know, if we pick somebody and, you know, in the bid process and what they're going to give us for the bank for a buck, hundred thousand dollars, a lot of money. So I think it is a very, very positive move for the city to do something like that.
One contract of that size would certainly come in for me, I guess.
Absolutely. Well, I think you've done a great job, NOLA. I mean, really, you know, I just see you burning the midnight hour, midnight oil, the midnight oil out there. You know, I see your little light on when I walk by up there, you know, so I know you've been working hard on it. Is there any major change in this paper that you gave us compared to the last paper that you gave us?
There could be a little bit of fine-tuning. What you have before you there is the final.
Okay, and we're going to...
So I would assume that anything you might have had before is a draft.
Okay, great.
And you make this very clear, easy to understand. Thank you.
That's the plan, and next year, our goal is to make it better.
Easier?
Easier, too. I'm always about easy.
Okay. Thank you.
This is an item where we do allow some public testimony concerning that, so at this time, if there's anybody from the public would like to weigh in, this would be your opportunity.
Mike Olson?
Yeah, Mike Olson. Yeah, I was a former commissioner, finance commissioner, and I was involved in four of these budget processes, and they're very difficult, they're very hard to understand, and I want to congratulate NOLA and her staff on jumping into this one year ago and picking up somebody else's work, two previous people's work, and doing an outstanding job with their leadership team that this is by far the most clear and understandable budget I've seen. So thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none at this time. Is there any other questions or comments from our Commission?
No.
Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close this public hearing and ask for a first reading of ordinance 1912-1217.
NOLA, do you have a copy?
Oh, yes, I do. I, sorry. Can you hand that over to Jamie?
Ordinance number 1912-1217, an ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, adopting the budget for the year ending December 31st, 2018.
And at this time, what I would do is say that we are concurring to place this on next week's agenda. Does there, we need any more motions at this time? First reading. Okay. To be continued. Thank you very much.
Today was the final budget hearing, so we would need this to be on your action agenda next week for adoption.
Action agenda for next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're moving into our business agenda at this time, and the first thing is that we're going to have Andy present us with a legislative agenda.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. For the past couple of months, staff's been working with Bill Burgess Government Relations, which is a government affairs consulting firm. We've been working on the development of a 2018 legislative agenda. At the November 13th Commission
At the November 13th commission meeting, Ryan presented you with a preliminary list of potential legislative priorities. These items that were mentioned were brought forward by members of the city leadership team, and the intent and focus there of those items that were brought forward were to be in direct reflection with the budgeting priorities that you guys have moving into 2018, which were, which are public safety, economic development, technology upgrades, and furthering the downtown vision plan. In addition to that, there's also a list of general policy issues and some additional, excuse me, general infrastructure projects that were listed on there as well. So since that time, we've gone through and reviewed that list extensively and with the consulting firm as well, and they were narrowed down and put into two categories. The first being a potential member request project, and the second being a potential competitive fund sources. And so, just to kind of explain what that means, the items that were identified as those potential member request projects, those are ones that have been determined that could physically be funded through, at the state level, through either the capital, transportation, or operating budgets. And that's what makes up the majority of this proposed legislative agenda that you have right now. And then the funding projects that were removed from that initial list that you reviewed, those will be pursued through competitive funding sources, grants, also some potential bonds and that, that were being identified at both state and federal level. Part of our agreement with Phil Burgess allows us to work with them on identifying different programs where those specific issues would be competitive, so we would be continuing to work in on those that were removed. So with approval from, from the commission, these items that you have in front of you, we will request, we would then submit appropriations requests for each project that's listed on here. And those, those would go to the members of our state delegate, delegation for consideration of sponsorship. On there, what it was narrowed down to, what you have in front of you, starting with the items that are listed in the infrastructure section, first one would be the downtown connector project, second is the wall steel on Shelton Springs Road intersection improvement project, the sanitation plant reclaim water tank, and then the one item that's on the public safety section would be the emergency operations center. Three items that are on the downtown vision plan are the Shelton Civic Center parking, or paving the parking lot, the community park restoration project, and the Shelton Timberland Library repair, the expenses for that. So those are the items that we would fill out actual appropriation requests and submit those to our state delegation. And then the last page are a list of general policy issues that were mentioned. Those, those haven't changed at all since the last time you saw those in November. So with that, I would ask if there's any questions. We have to answer those.
Questions or comments for Andy?
No. It looks good.
What I would do is, now, in action days coming up here in January, where we go over and we meet with our legislators and we have the big tent and hot dogs and balloons and all that stuff, it'd be really good to have a little list, you know, prepared, and maybe you could come with us, and we could meet with our legislators and give them, give them that at that time also.
Right, and I think that the idea of having this actual legislative agenda, we'd also, like, if you were to approve this and put this on the action agenda for next week, is to actually adopt a resolution to formalize this list. Really, what that does is then gives us the ability to go forward and make, submit those appropriations requests, because we will be working with that consulting firm to do that. They'll help us actually submit those, and that would be much sooner than the, the action days. So we'd want to do that prior to the start of the legislative session.
Absolutely. So what are you asking for us today? You want a motion?
Yeah, we would, we would like you to pass this on to the, and put that on the action agenda, and then we'll bring forward a resolution, you would actually adopt a resolution to formalize this agenda for 2018.
Well, I'm reading my fine notes here, and what it kind of looks like is you're actually looking for us to concur. Is that correct, Jamie? I don't see...
They're asking you to put it on the action agenda for next Monday.
Put it on the action, so we concur to do that. Okay. So do we concur to place this on the action agenda for next week?
Yes.
Appears we do. Thank you very much, sir.
And then we'll be voting on it next week.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Next is item number two under our business agenda, and that is a comprehensive plan update. Oh, no, this guy speaks for hours. Jason?
I tried.
Oh, is there any, is there any way? Can you please leave us of just...
Well, you're very articulate when you do it.
Now, you do good. I like when you get up with the graphs and the maps and everything. Could you make this very, very easy for us to get, please?
I will try.
Okay.
No maps and charts today.
All right, okay.
I come unarmed.
All right, I turn this meeting over to Jason, he's our senior planner.
So this is basically an update as to the status of our comprehensive plan, which, to remind the commission, was started back in 2014, under different staff at the time heading it up. In 2015, it was amended, the comprehensive plan was, to add a couple of urban growth area expansion pieces. One is a 300-acre piece of property located south of the Shelton Hills property that would add a, more a residentially zoned and developable piece property, the UGA. The other one is a commercial industrial area that's proposed on the northwest portion of the current UGA to the west of Sanderson Field along Dayton Airport Road. It's a 600-acre commercial industrial job center. That added a considerable, considerable amount of time to the process. We had to develop an EIS for that. And to remind the commission, we released the EIS, the draft EIS, and draft comprehensive plan in February of this year, and held it open for a 60-day state comment period for state agencies, state staff, 30-day public comment period. And we received not too many comments, but they were substantive enough that we had to go back, do some additional traffic analysis for WashDOT. We did a bit more analysis pursuant to some comments from the Squonkson Island Tribe, and also made some minor adjustments to the plan based on some comments from citizens. We had several comments from citizens.
Oh, EIS for...
Environmental impact statement.
Right, okay.
Sorry. That is, it's a rather comprehensive document utilized to review the environmental impacts of a proposal required by the state. In this case, we thought the impacts might be significant enough that we did the EIS, and it's a, that document and the final draft comprehensive plan have been online on our website, the initial draft since February, and it's still up there. These final drafts have been up since August, the final EIS was up, and in November, the end of November, we put up the final comprehensive plan. Now, this final draft comprehensive plan that we're asking you hold a public hearing on next week at your regular meeting is extremely similar to what you saw in February. Basic changes to it involve traffic pursuant to the WashDOT comments from the state. So the traffic facilities section has been updated. We updated the capital facilities cost estimates based on the capital improvement program the commission adopted recently that, by the way, greatly reduced the expected outlay over the planning period for the sewer utility in particular. And we also spent a considerable amount of time dealing with new county staff on the population allocation for Mason County. Those new population numbers are also reflected in the document. So they changed a bit from what was originally agreed upon in 2015. It required some minor amendment to the comprehensive plan and the EIS. So that's, that's where we lost a lot of time between February and now. Normally, we'd like to come back before the commission with the final document in a much shorter timeframe, but in this case, like I say, pleased to announce it's online, it's up there for everyone to look at, and we're hoping to have the public hearing next week. No action for you today, but pending the outcome of that public hearing, we will be asking for a first reading of an ordinance that would adopt the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Well, you are asking us to basically place this at our next meeting, so you are asking for a little bit of action.
Well, yeah.
Not a lot, but a little bit. Well, it all depends on what my fellow commissioners want to do.
Yes.
I had, so the reason that the projected needs for the sewer utility are less is because of the new technology?
That's my understanding, yes. Our satellite wastewater treatment plant, Craig can correct me if I'm wrong, in the current sewer comprehensive plan, it identifies nearly 40 million in upgrades required to expand that plant to accommodate expected growth over the next 20, 25 years. The new technology allows them to expand that plant for a fraction of the cost. I believe it's in the realm of three to, two to three million, or three to four million, but orders of magnitude lower to get the same expansion in the plant. It's quite interesting. I mean, that's a new plant. It was done in 2009.
Yeah, Craig would end up getting about 1.5 million instead of the proposed 40 million.
Wow. So that was good news.
Very good news.
Any more?
That's awesome. Science, science is real.
Yes.
Any more questions for Jason?
No.
Okay. We'll look...
18. Staff has been working to enter into a new lease agreement with the US Postal Service to maintain the park for community use, but will not have a full review done by the end of the lease term of December 31st. So today, we're bringing you a lease extension that would extend it for six months into 2018. This would be essentially the same terms of the, of the existing lease that expires into this year. The city would maintain the park, and the city would also sign and designate 20 parking stalls on Franklin and Second Street for use for US Postal Service employees as the original lease indicated. There is a memorandum of agreement that was in place prior to the original lease, way back in 1997, and I believe you got a hard copy of in your package today, but for the public, if they want a hard copy, we can provide that to them today. So we are asking for commission's consent to put this on the action agenda for next week, and we will bring you a, a new lease in 2018 when all parties have reviewed it and agree upon the principles.
So it's just giving us six months to get that in order?
Six months to work on, yes, to work on, on a new lease. Exactly right.
Good.
I, Mark, this came about because I remember back in the day, there was a proposal to take out the park and put parking, a parking lot there, is that right?
That's right.
And so this is how we managed to save Post Office Park.
Yeah, essentially, the US Postal Service wanted to provide employee parking. Their proposal was to essentially take out the, you know, the open area on the east side of the existing post office building. The city worked with the postal service to create more on-street parking, sign that for their employees' use and maintain the park area for the, for the public.
Yeah, I remember protesting that plan and to remove that park, and it's definitely nice to have it there, so, thank you.
It appears that we concur to place this on the action agenda for December 18th, 2017. Okay. Next is, we're going to talk a little bit about some grant acceptance here, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to our Public Works Director, Craig Gregory.
Thanks, Mayor Commissioners. We've talked about this project quite a few times, the Turner Street project, that we did a grant ask for from Transportation Improvement Board. And to get started with this work and get this out to bid, we are asking for the commission to concur to move the field tax agreement and also the project funding status form on the action agenda for next year, next week. I have worked with Noah quite extensively to ensure that we have the funding to move forward with the match for this project, so we don't need to worry about that piece of it.
I think it's exceptionally wonderful, wonderful job that's being done, that we're getting 90% grant on these projects. That is fantastic. I greatly commend your department and you yourself for that excellent work in that. Looking forward to moving this forward. I have no problems with it.
Do, do we have a breakdown yet? And it's probably in here, but the amount that's going to come out of the Transportation Benefit District?
For this particular project, for Turner Street alone?
Uh-huh.
We were looking at, it was around 30,000, I believe, is what the projected amount was for coming out of Transportation Benefit District money.
Okay, well, thank goodness that we have that.
And just for the public, is what we've decided to do as a commission is to leverage that money, that 30,000, to get something like a 10% to 90% grant. And so, that's an excellent use for that money, rather than just taking all the money and just doing one project, we're taking 10% at a time, which is doing major projects. So I think that's a good choice and a good way to go. Okay, thank you very much. So I believe we concur with that to place that on next week's action agenda. Yep. All right. And I think you have some more grant information to talk to us about.
Same thing with the downtown connector project funding. TIB needs those same two forms signed and sent back to them before we can actually move forward with the downtown connector project. Not quite as good of a match on this project to get it funded. It was recommended that we ask for 70% of this total project, and the total grant was for 3.3 million, with about, just short of a million dollars coming out of the TBD funds, and the rest picked up by Mason County PUD and Mason County Transit Authority, along with Mason Conservation District, but the efforts that they're putting into this project also making up a total project of just better than $5 million.
Questions or comments?
I just want to say once again, because I can't help but say it every time, is I'm so thankful for our community for passing the Transportation Benefit District, and we're already seeing after two years, these wonderful fruits and progress that we wouldn't otherwise have had. And so, I just am always grateful for the voters. I'm always grateful for former Commissioner Olson for pushing that through, and it's something that I assume we will always have. We'll be voting on that again in ten, eight years now, so...
Yes, so just to finish that, in 2018, so you're looking at about $6 million worth of projects coming out of those TBD funds between the 20 residential blocks that we will be paving, the Turner Street project, and also the downtown connector project that would not be possible without that TBD money. So we're very fortunate to have that, and it puts us in a great position to ask for grants it did for this year and moving forward in years to come, so.
Great. Fabulous.
All right. It looks like we concur to place this on our action agenda, December 18th, 2017. Thank you very much. And is another report by you concerning Basin 3. It's a Basin 3 update.
So as we were getting ready to get Basin 3 to bid, we have been informed that there is a chance that the capital budget will not go through again for 2018, which would put us in a position that, basically leveraging about $3 million that is either a direct appropriation or re-appropriated within that capital budget that we would not receive and would have to make another ask in 2019. So just wanted to make sure that we were transparent with the commission to move, and have you make a decision on whether to move forward with this project. We do have funding available of around 4.4 million in loans. That is a 20-year loan at 2.3%, so it's a fairly low-interest loan. And then we've got a direct appropriation of 1.455 million, and also a DOT grant, Centennial Grant, of 1.975 million, which, right now, the engineer's estimate, the most recent one that we just got back from, the consultant design engineer, is 5.63 million, and that does not include any road restoration. That is just trench restoration at this time. So we would be dipping into that loan, those loan funds, if we do decide to move forward with this project.
If I could speak first about this, because this is very dear to my heart. If we have to borrow money to do that basin, we have to borrow money to do the basin. I have fought for five years to get every penny I could, working with Craig and his department, Senator Sheldon, Drew McEwen, Dan Griffey, I've been in their offices crying for five years. If that 3 million doesn't come back over here, we have to do the project. And if we do go forward with a potential borrowing $4 million for this, or whatever you're requesting, if we're halfway through it and that money comes out of there, we don't have to take the whole 4 million. I mean, there is, you're still, there is a slight rate of hope that that other 3 million will come back and do this project.
I think it's more than a slight... I think it's more than a slight ray of hope. I think it's, from what we understand, it's about a 50-50 chance. But certainly, moving forward with this project, we would expend all of the grant funds. This project looks like it's about a two-year construction period, so we would certainly expend any of those grant funds before we dipped into the loan portion of that, and hopefully that would give us enough time to get that capital budget passed. We did ask the question, and haven't gotten an answer back yet, is if we did get into the loan portion and then a capital budget was passed, could we use that capital budget money to pay off that loan? We haven't gotten that question answered yet, but we're certainly awaiting that to figure in the decision of moving forward with this.
What is the percent that the engineer's estimates are going up? I know construction's getting expensive.
We've heard as much as 50 percent over engineer's estimates.
How much?
50 percent. We are hoping that with the staff, time, and dedication that they've put to this project, eliminating and just tightening up that bid for quantities, we've changed a few of our standards to allow for some savings by getting rid of controlled-density backfill, which is basically concrete within the road section, and going back to compaction testing and using bank-run material, which would save us somewhere around $500,000 to $750,000 on that project. So we have tweaked it somewhat and tried to build in some savings there, but the bid market right now is not great.
So it sounds as if we may end up having, needing some of that loan money even if we do get all of the appropriations and?
Yes, that is entirely possible, and it will be a decision that we will bring back for the commission to decide on whether, right now, we've got two different schedules within that. So Schedule One is just the basin rehab project, and Schedule Two would be the paving of all of the roadways within that basin. So we will be bringing back to the commission a decision on whether we want to dip into any of this loan money or additional grant money that would go to pave those roadways also.
Okay. Did you ask what the construction, is that what you asked, the cost? I asked about the engineer's estimates and the cost of construction going up. Okay. Right.
Well, if anybody can fix this, it's Craig Gregory. I'll just tell you right now, my total faith and confidence in that young man is high expectation, so I don't know. Do we have anything else to discuss about this matter of Basin Three?
I just would like to add that I am on a local board, the Oakland Bay Clean Water Advisory Board, and it's made up from a number of entities who are involved in the clean water in Oakland Bay and down in Hammersley Inlet, and they're extremely excited to hear that we're going to go ahead with this project. So it's getting regional attention, so.
We'll keep our fingers crossed to get that capital budget passed.
Get it?
Yeah.
Just do it. Thank you very much. We concur. It looks like whatever we're concurring on that particular measure to, on the action agenda item, you're going to place this funding project on our agenda for next week. Thank you very much. All right, number seven is a Capitol Hill Booster Pump Station upgrade, and so you are on again, Mr. Craig Gregory.
So we just need a final acceptance of the Capitol Hill Booster Pump upgrade. It was a replacement of a booster pump that was about 40 years old and about 20 years past its useful life, and it was budgeted in 2017 for $40,000. The total project came to just over $34,000, so well under budget, but we are asking to move this to the action agenda for next week so that we can get that invoice to NOLA and her team to get it paid out of the 2017 budget, so we don't carry it into 2018.
Can you kind of explain so that our citizens can kind of understand the story behind this booster pump and?
So basically, it's a booster pump up on Capitol Hill that feeds the entire Capitol Hill neighborhood. It pushes water from the tank out into that community. If we were to lose that, we would have a serious issue with providing water up in that area, and that's why it was defined as a needed project for 2017, and it was funded.
You have the money, you have the money available, it says here.
Correct. It was budgeted for 2017, and it did come in under budget.
Very good.
Any other questions or comments concerning this pump?
Nope.
Okay, so we recommend that the commission approve that, I guess.
Well, put it on there.
Well, it doesn't talk about putting it on anything. It just says to approve it.
Place the final acceptance.
You'll see on the briefing sheet.
Oh, on this one over here?
Yeah.
I got two sheets. A fight between two sheets? Okay, we'll put it on the action agenda for December 18, 2017. Thank you very much. Next is an action agenda item, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to our City Manager, Ryan Wheaton, at this time.
Mayor Commissioners, we're bringing back the ordinance from last week that you voted on, changing the commission meeting times from Mondays to Tuesdays, first and third Tuesday at 7:00 p.m. We didn't specify first and final last week, so we're asking, unless there are any other questions, to do a final reading, a second reading, and then take another vote, just so we make sure that we cross all the Ts and dot all the Is.
That's right. This is an item where if anybody from the public wants to talk about this, we're changing our meetings from every Monday to just every other Tuesday, evening meetings only. This would be an opportunity for somebody in the public, if they want to talk about this, we think it's a good idea. Seeing nobody coming forward, what questions or comments does the commission have concerning this?
There are so many moving targets on this change, so it's, I appreciate the work everybody's going through to make this transition go smoothly. My question is, and this will probably be something that will have to be decided by the council, is there are a number of meetings that we attend during the day at different hours of the day, and so I'm concerned about making sure that we have city representation on those boards, because a number of the people that I'm talking to who are interested in running for council will not be able to make the daytime meetings because of their jobs. So is, at what point will we be talking about that?
We won't know what people's schedules are until they're elected in the spring, so if that issue does come up, then we would certainly deal with it then, but at this point, we're anticipating that having seven people versus a three will have.
You'll have other people that can go out, yeah, okay, because I know that it is important on many of these boards that we do have representation, so. Okay, that was the only question I had.
Any questions or comments concerning this change of meeting schedule? Hearing none, at this moment, I would, at this time, I'd like to ask for a second reading of ordinance 1914-1217.
Ordinance number 1914-1217, an ordinance of the City of Shelton, amending Section 2.04.010 of Chapter 2.04 of the Shelton Municipal Code, changing the day and time of the Shelton Commission meetings.
I would ask for a motion at this time?
I move to adopt ordinance number 1914-1217, an ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, amending sections 2.040.010 and 2.04.020 of Chapter 2.04 of the Shelton Municipal Code, changing the day and time of city commission meetings. Should we put in council meetings on that?
No, not at this time.
Okay.
There's a motion, is there a second of them?
Um, I second that.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. All right, item number two is a first and final reading relating to salaries of the city commission.
Mayor Commissioners, this is some information that we briefed on, I think, twice before, and prepared this for your review last week. This ordinance would change not only the salary, but also eliminates the per diem that's currently in place. So we brought that forward. As you'll notice on the last page, the compensation for meetings and the salary remains the same for the three current commission positions until such time as those positions, the terms end, and then everybody would be the same. On the last page, you see a breakdown of that information, and what we're proposing is a $6,000 a year salary for commissioners. And then at a point between now and when the council actually takes its seat, we would also request that we, at some point during that time, look at a salary commission that can actually review this for the council when it comes onboard.
Questions or comments? We have, excuse me, just a second. We do it from the public, we, I think we usually go with the public first and we'll talk about it. We did see a hand over there. Did you want to speak? Please. And you are Carolyn Herr.
I'm Karen Herr, I'm the county auditor, and I'm just here to encourage the city commission to establish new salaries for the council members. We did receive your resolution asking us to be, to conduct the election in February, and we're happy to do so. We plan to conduct a three-day filing period starting Monday, next Monday. There's been a little confusion on those days, but it'll be Monday, December 18, through Wednesday, December 20. And when candidates come in to file for office, they must pay a filing fee, and per RCW 29A 24091, a filing fee equal, must be equal to 1 percent of the annual salary of the office at the time of filing shall accompany the declaration of candidacy. In the event that new salaries are not established today, we, the only option we would have is to charge the 1 percent on the current salary of the commission. And I would know, and you would know, and all the candidates would know, that that is incorrect, and that concerns me, and so I'm just here to encourage establishing new salaries. I would just like to add that per my legal counsel at the county, if you decide not to establish new salaries, we would be requesting a hold harmless agreement from the city to the county in the event that there is any kind of potential claim against the county related to this issue.
I think we're leaning in your direction.
That's great. Just to make sure, I saw last week that it was taken off the agenda, so that did concern me. So we're kind of between, you know, it's next week, so we really encourage that to happen today.
Well, I'm on your side, so let's just move forward and see. Any questions or comments?
We do have one more person on the public comment.
Oh, that's right, okay, oh, public comment.
Mike Olson, I have a couple more comments on trust and transparency. As chairman of the meeting, it's your right to pull something off the agenda, which you did last week without any explanation, and I think that without any explanation, I think people such as myself surmise it was another delay tactic, and as Karen states, we're right up against this. So I would hope that you do finish this today. And also moving forward, you have an option, I believe, to forego your per diem voluntarily, and I think that that would be a generous effort on your part to regain some trust in the public, to show them that this isn't just a job for you guys to receive financial benefit from. You're going to be moving from a questionable, a full-time position to certainly a part-time position, so I think it's only fair that you reduce your salaries. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments from the public? I don't see anybody at this time. Any questions or comments from our commission?
Yes, there, I do have some questions. I'm fine with moving ahead with this salary question, but there are some other issues that are not in here, and we're also needing to get those rectified as well. And so I can either hold those questions until after we vote, or I can ask those questions now.
I think, Commissioner Moore, what we need to do is stay to this subject, vote on this subject, and if there's other things we need, we can talk probably after.
That's, that's fine.
Okay, so at this point, I'm willing to accept the motion to approve the recommendations and have a first and final reading of this ordinance. Now, if we don't want to do that, then as Mrs. Herr said there, Ms. Herr, we probably go into a place we don't want to go. So if my fellow commissioners concur with this, then we could have a first reading and final reading of this ordinance.
Yes, yes.
Ordinance number 1913-1217, an ordinance fixing the salary of the commission and the mayor of the City of Shelton under the provisions of Section 35.17.108, laws of the state of Washington.
Is there a motion?
I move to adopt the ordinance number 1913-1217, an ordinance fixing the salary of the commission and mayor of the City of Shelton under the provisions of Section 35. 17.108, laws of the state of Washington.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you. I guess concerning you wanting to make some more comments, we have the administration reports coming up. Do you want to make your comments now?
I can make my comments in the administration report.
Oh, after that, okay, let's do that. Okay, Vicki Look, welcome back.
Thank you. A tan.
Is that a spray-on tan, or is that the real tan?
Only I know.
I want to go to Disneyland again in Florida. That's where you get nice tans down there, sunny, you know, if you avoid the hurricanes and things like that. Anyway, you're up. Let's stay right on track, or we're going to go into two hours here.
Well, we've been very busy in the administration over the last month, in addition to all the things that have been going on with the, you know, activities regarding moving to a council for my government. We've had several positions that we've either, we've filled internally, such as, we had Parks Facility Crew Leader that we promoted, and an Assistant Crew Leader, and that was because we had a resignation of our facilities manager, and so we've reorganized and brought those duties into the union. We had a Recreation Leader, Casual Worker Recruitment, and we filled that position, a Legal Process Assistant, and a part-time clerical in the municipal court, as well as a records clerk that was brought onboard for the police department. And in the process, we have the RFP that we did for the municipal court judge. We are going to be completing that process and conducting interviews in the next week or so. We have civil service testing this week for entry-level positions. We just, we need to get prepared for openings as they come up, so we do have an assessment center interview process panel that we will be conducting this Wednesday. We did a recruitment for an administrative support assistant. That's coming to near closure, so pretty excited to get somebody onboard with that. And that will be taking Cory's place? Yes. Okay. Yep, working for the court, the city clerk in records and supporting the city commission. And Craig has a public works reorganization down there that we've been working on, so that's taken a little bit of our time. That was due to a resignation of a crew lead, and so making some efficiencies in the reorganization. So we've been busy doing that. I've been negotiating with our labor, for our labor contracts. We have three open contracts this year, and I'm hoping to get that closed this month before the end of the year, I'm hopeful. And doing so, we will have to bring those agreements to you in the next week or so, not next week, but the following week, for your ratification of those agreements. So I'm hopeful on that. So we'll be voting on those before the end of the year? You would be taking action on those if I can get those wrapped up, which I hope I can. Okay. The Wellness Committee here, that works under the administration supervision, is very active. They're doing a great job. They've done a lot of activities, which meets the requirements to receive a grant from our Association of Washington Cities, who we have our medical benefits through. our Association of Washington Cities, who we have our medical benefits through, so we're on line to get a $400 grant that we can spend toward wellness activities and/or equipment for a fitness room. So we're, that's, that's a good thing, and we get a, with that, we get a 2% discount in our overall benefit cost, and so it's the activities of the, of the committee.
No, last, last time we did this, you filled them candy machines all full of that health candy food stuff, you know, and I was going over there to get me some M&amp;Ms, and man, all it was, was like granola bars with no sugar and all that kind of stuff. I mean, I'm into health, but please, don't stock those machines with all that stuff. Could you please?
I would, there's a store across the street.
Please, please, okay. I remember when it happened, and all of a sudden, where's my chips?
We want people to be calm and not come in without the sugar going on.
That's right, we do.
So, and again, then there, also the same committee is, is, has been planning for the well, or for the employee appreciation this Thursday, so we're looking forward to that. It'll, it'll be a nice activity. We've had a lot of training going on. We had anti-harassment training here, and of course, on planning and the Open Public Meetings Act. Elected officials, we went to that just recently, I believe, and we also participated, I am the assistant up there, in HR, participated in best practices for interviewing and hiring. And then we have ongoing, of course, review of policies that requires compliance of the new laws that come into effect for 2018. So that's just in addition to some of the things that are the routine things that I won't bore you with.
You're never a bore, Vicki Look, and it's just amazing how much there is to run a city. It just goes on and on and on. But any questions or comments for Vicki Look on this administration staff?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Sounds, sounds good, Vicki. Thank you very much.
After two weeks, I might not know the answer.
Yeah. Next is our financial update from Noah Manudek.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. Since it's the middle of December, and I came to work here almost exactly one year ago, I thought it would be helpful to give you a summary of what's been happening in finance in 2017. So I'm going to give you kind of a big-picture overview of what we've done this year and what we're focusing on for 2018. First, I'll talk about the GAAP to cash conversion. We completed the city's conversion from GAAP basis to cash basis accounting retroactive to the beginning of 2016. We did that about mid-year, and that really helps to improve efficiencies in the finance department. We also implemented Positive Pay, which is an electronic check monitoring and anti-fraud system. We implemented Direct Deposit for all employees. This improves security and efficiency, and it saves our employees time and money. We started the electronic timesheet system, got that up and running, and I believe almost all of our employee groups are now utilizing the electronic timesheets. We got all of our bank accounts reconciled and current. We have gotten all of our finance reports for all of 2016 and up through November for 2017 available, and the leadership team members are able to log into our financial software and generate any finance reports that they want to right up to the minute at any time, so that's available now. We spent some time consolidating and streamlining our vendor accounts and revenue and expenditure accounts. When I came here last December, I discovered we had in excess of 3,500 revenue, individual revenue accounts and expenditure accounts, which is really a lot. So we've been working on reducing that and seeing where we can logically consolidate some of those revenue and expenditure accounts. There were some duplicate vendor accounts. We've gotten those cleaned up and merged as appropriate. The garbage service transition was a big project for us. Got that smoothly handed over to Mason County Garbage on the finance component of it. The auditor's office came in, the state auditor's office, and they completed our 2015 financial audit, and that was, that was finished as of a couple of months ago, and we did have a clean audit. They also finished the 2015 and 16 accountability audit, that as well, other than a couple of minor exit items, was a clean audit. As far as the 2017 amended budget, that was just recently approved. My goal for next year is that we'll be doing that in June instead of December. As far as business license renewals, we've been looking at our system for business license renewals, and we have changed that to try to improve some efficiencies there. We'll probably be spending some more time on that next year to clean it up even further. As of last Thursday, we had a consultant come in from Tyler Technologies, and he was here for two days. He's working with the staff to launch the Intergov, which is a software that's compatible with our financial software. Intergov deals with permitting and tax reporting, and he is in the process now of building the infrastructure of that for the city of Shelton. We are targeting a go-live for Intergov in early 2018. We're hoping February, if all goes well. The 2018 budget, you know where we are on that. That was a significant undertaking for me this year, because I had to basically start from scratch and build a new system for creating a budget. We now have a better system in place than last year, but not as good as next year, so we're happy to have that process in place and working. For 2018, our focus is going to be on getting the Intergov module fully functional for both permitting and business tax reporting. We're going to be focusing on improving our budgeting processes. We're also going to focus on getting caught up on all of our annual reports and audits. We're working with the state to implement the State Business Licensing Service, because that's one of the requirements now. So we're, we're in the queue. We're just waiting for them to call us and say, okay, it's your turn to get set up. So we'll, we'll start that setup process next year, and we'll need to work with them to coordinate their service along with our internal records to make sure those mesh well together. We also have on our, on our list of things to focus on next year, we want to audit and update the indirect cost allocation model for the city, and we want to implement a web-based tool called Insight, which is a utility billing customer website, we've talked about before. We want to also implement the purchasing module in our financial software, and we are hoping to review and update all of our financial policies. And I did not do all this work myself. We have a really excellent finance team. Elaine Merka, John Sim, Bobby Smith, Cheryl Betrazov, Kim Kilmer, and Megan Croson are the other people that, they're usually the ones behind the curtain you don't see, but they do a lot of this work to make all this happen, and they've been an excellent team. So that is my report for finance.
Then you take a nap.
Any questions?
Lot of work.
Sounds good.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Craig Gregory.
Thanks, Mayor. Commissioners, just want to start off by thanking the Public Works crews for making downtown look so great, for the holiday parade that we had last week, and the decorations on the vehicles and equipment that we also put into the parade. They take honor and pride in doing that, so I thought it looked really good down there.
One second.
Sure.
Secretary of State, Kim Wyman, was in town. I was talking to her, and she said our downtown literally smoked anything she's ever seen. So there you go. Tell those boys they did a great job. She loved it, and so, that's from Kim.
Thank you. If you haven't noticed, with the recent very cold weather that we're having, the Public Works crews have been out de-icing the hills, and seems to really be cutting down on accidents and the need to go out and sand in overtime. So they have been doing that, and we are in the process of developing a de-icing map to designate those routes that will get that application. Right now, we only have a snow and ice removal plan, so we will be getting that done and getting that out onto the city website, so folks can see where those routes are for those events. And then Turner Street Project, we talked about it earlier, but we are designing currently. Looks like it should be just a two- or three-week design period for that project. It's a pretty simple design. It's basically just establishing center line of that project, and then side street returns for paving, so we are looking to get that out to bid fairly soon. And one thing that we are committed to in Public Works is when we get grant funding, we know we've got projects that the community wants and needs, and we are going to get those out within that year, that next year, and get those constructed rather than sitting on those like we have in the past. The Downtown Connector Project, we just received 50% design last week, and crews have gone through, and the engineering staff have gone through those 50% designs, and Gray and Osborne has done a fantastic job putting those together, and it doesn't look like they will be too far off from getting us a 90% submittal sometime the first week of January. So we're pretty excited about that. They're ahead of schedule at this point. They were supposed to have us 100% by mid-February, so any time that they can save us to get that out to bid this winter instead of in the spring will certainly help our bid prices, so we're hoping to push that out as soon as possible. It does look like we've had a few major changes to that design than what we presented at the public meeting a few months ago, so we are likely to have another public meeting soon, probably sometime mid-January after we get those 90% back, but certainly before we finalize that project design so that the public can voice their opinion and, and give us their comments.
Can you specify what the major design changes are?
It is a, two of the major portions are the center divider islands and what we're actually going to do with those with the original proposal. We weren't real sure what the spacing and size of those would be. We have looked at those, and the other one will be the intersection improvement at First and Alder.
Okay.
But we will also be meeting with our public safety officers also, not only from the city, but also the county, to make sure that that First and Alder section is going to work for any of those emergency responders trying to get through that intersection. So that is it for me, unless you have any more questions.
I had a question about the Turner Avenue project. I, I know that the complete streets is one of the things that we're looking at, and how is it that we don't have to put sidewalks on Turner?
Through the arterial preservation program, through TIV.
Okay.
That is one of the grant opportunities that they have that is designated for just a roadway paving project.
So it's not really an improvement?
It would be an improvement to the pavement, but not, yeah, the overall scope of the entire road section, and that's really what that grant is for. It's not a complete, complete streets component.
Okay.
It doesn't ask you to do any traffic calming sidewalks, any of those other things that, that that Downtown Connector project was asking for.
So it's more like a maintenance type?
It is more of a maintenance, yes, that is correct.
There's not much room on each side for sidewalks up there anyway, is there, on Turner?
No, you could get them in. We have plenty of right-of-way. There's a 60-foot right-of-way there. It would mean that you would most likely have to push back quite a bit of the property owner's.
Right, that's what.
Sections.
Right.
But we certainly do not have the funding for that, and that would be very expensive to install a sidewalk either on one side or both sides of that roadway. And like Commissioner Moore pointed out, this is really just a preservation of the pavement that's there now. It's not adding any, anything to it, landscaping, sidewalks, any of that sort of thing. And that will be something that, working with the consultant, Steve Gorchester, this is one program that is very well-funded and something that, with as many designated routes that we have, he's suggesting we put in for one of these annually.
Fabulous.
And he thinks we should be able to get one on an annual basis, so that is one thing that we will be continuing to do.
Are we going to have a maintenance program on, or a maintenance plan on Turner?
We are, right now, looking at a maintenance plan for all of our streets. Getting into a raid, a road rating program along with sidewalks and ADA ramps in addition, so we will be bringing that forward hopefully by mid-year 2018 of what we're actually looking at. And it'll really give us the ability to really define those residential streets and also those large projects that we go after for funding, and be able to prioritize what those are so that we're not just randomly selecting streets out there to fix. So it'll give us a better idea of what really needs to be fixed.
Okay. So Craig, assuming that we do continue on yearly and, and go after another of those grants, if it is a street with sidewalks, do they do, does the grant provide any maintenance dollars for the sidewalks, or is it just the street?
It, it's different programs. They've got four different programs that you can apply under.
Okay.
And really, it's, it's, the arterial preservation program is really just streets.
Okay.
The other three are for larger projects, so that would be sidewalks, street skate, lighting, all of those other things. So you really have to just pick and choose what you really want to go after, and how often you're actually going to get those funded. So those major projects, we understand, are every two or three years. The arterial preservation is probably every year, so it really depends on what you're asking for as far as funding goes.
Okay.
But we will always take a look at sidewalks.
Yeah, I like sidewalks.
And, and it may not be under that program. We are looking at, we just had somebody in from local programs, which is federal, to look at some sort of safe routes to schools, some ADA transitions and other things, and their suggestion was after a recent return of federal funding that we did have, start with a smaller project, maybe a connection of ADA ramps, and get that done, and show them that we can actually spend federal dollars so that we can ask for a larger sidewalk or ADA project.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much for your report. Item number two is a city manager report. Do you have a report for us today, Mr. Wheaton?
Just one thing, Mayor, Commissioners, we now have the basic information that we need to put out, kind of a final synopsis of what's ahead for the council, so that when people do register or file to run, we'll be able to provide the basic information. So we just wanted to thank you three for getting all that stuff done on such short notice. I know there's a lot of work to get through, but.
There'll be a paper that they will be handed, or?
That'll be up to the county, but what we'll do on our end, we've already put out information about what decisions were ahead, and tomorrow, our communications team will work on getting information out about what's been decided, and that information now can go over to the auditor.
My, my question from earlier is somewhat related to this. Were you finished?
I am done.
Can I interrupt now? Okay, a couple weeks ago, when we were having the discussion on, on the compensation for being on the council, and we were also, started the conversation about health insurance, and I think that's a major issue that we need to work on now. And so I noticed when this came back that the health insurance issue is taken off of it, and I was just wondering, and I don't see it on the Looking Ahead calendar, so I'm wondering at what time or why we haven't dealt with that yet.
We wanted to make sure that we got through the salary component, so the benefits we recognize, we do need to address, but it, at this point, we don't have it on the agenda, but take a look.
I guess my question would be, when will we look at it? It would be a fair statement to me to make sure that the people who are looking at running for office would have a clear, a clear vision of what their compensation will be.
Well, there's no health benefits for the new, new council. I mean, I don't think there is any. I mean, that's what we just signed.
That's what what?
That's what we just signed. We, I don't think there, we, we talked about not including health benefits for the new council members, and no meeting, no benefits there, just the $6,000 per year. just the $6,000 per year. I think that's what we agreed upon and voted on.
So your intent is for the remaining, the three council members that are seated when the rest of the council is seated to have the full slate of health benefits?
My intent is to follow the law. And whatever the law is, that's what I'll.
I'm not questioning the law at all. I just, I just remember a couple of weeks ago, you were very adamant that you felt that the health insure, health benefits were something that the city could not afford. And so I'm looking for clarification in that.
I didn't write any of this stuff, so I'm just telling you. Do we have a lawyer here?
I could maybe weigh in on that.
Okay.
So we were asked to look at moving the salary item forward, sort of on an urgent timeframe. And as to the benefit question, there's some research that's ongoing with respect to a 1999 ordinance and its application. And so what I could say that this is doing is fixing the salary for commission positions that would move forward after the current seated commission positions. It's setting a base salary that everyone can use when they're doing their filing for the filing fee. It is not necessarily setting anything for the new council as it'll, as it'll move forward. That'll be addressed, as Ryan kind of mentioned, with the salary commission evaluation. So it's setting a baseline so folks know numerically what their salary is going to be based on for the filing fee. We do have, in the very near future, this question of the benefits and the interpretation of the ordinance. It's not something we could have resolved within this week. So it's being actively reviewed and all.
So is that why it was pulled up the agenda last week?
I was uncomfortable with sending anything forward that there was a possible legal question. There is a legal question about salary benefits, and I felt uncomfortable signing anything that I had a question about. So I just want to make sure that we do have the legal. That's all, you know.
So the way I'd frame this is it's preserving that question for it to be addressed as soon as, as, as possible. So it, nothing changed in the 1999 ordinance language. We simply changed the dollar number for salaries in the future, and then we'll be tackling the interpretation of that language just as soon as we can.
Okay. So the way, the way, if I understand correctly, so the three commissioners who become council members will not be affected?
Right, everything has to stay the same for the folks who are currently in positions. And so as we identified in the ordinance, it's Mayor Cronce, Commissioner McDowell, and then elected Commissioner Dorsey. The Constitution prohibits us from making adjustments to those positions, so those will proceed forward on the same salary. And basically, the, everything will stay the same for them. This was setting for commission positions that would follow those, in theory, if we weren't changing form of government.
Oh, okay.
If that makes sense.
Okay.
Well, for commission positions.
Because it's not a council until, does it become?
Exactly. It's a kind of a funny gray, it's a kind of a funny interim period because right now, we are still commissioned and we will be until the council is seated. That's why it seems a little awkward, if that makes sense.
So you're having the issue with determining what the language is for the medical benefits?
We actually had to set the dollar figure for the filing fee as the auditor presented today for those prospective council person positions that are going to be filing. But the awkward thing is, we won't be a council until they are seated.
Oh, I see.
And we needed to adjust the number to a number that was palatable for that new model, but doing it under the current model that we have in place.
When will they be seated? When, with the date?
You know, we have a February-April election cycle, so primae-ish.
So I had a question about that, too. And this is all just so new and exciting. So if, if, in the election in February, if you have two people running for each position, and so there is not a need for a primary, does the council get seated earlier than that? Because there's not really a reason to have a general.
No, I could take questions on that and research and report back. I'm not really prepared to just kind of add talk.
You are.
But there's a lot of formation questions, and I welcome them all from, from all of the electeds and management, and we'll research them and report right back.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, that's a question I hadn't thought of.
So if we have like three in one position and two on the other position, then we have to go into a general election.
And that's what I was saying. We'll, we'll make sure we research all that. And if you, if you all have questions, we can map it out very, hopefully very clearly.
Okay, sorry to put you on the spot.
No, no, that's fine.
Well, the key is, is we just have to do everything legal.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we're supposed to do.
That's the plan.
Right, golly.
Okay.
I don't think anybody's suggesting we don't.
Oh, we've got to do everything. Okay, it looks like that concludes this meeting. Our next meeting will be December 18th in the evening at 2017, 6:00 PM. And this meeting is adjourned.